Got a new gavel, James give me a gavel. We're close meeting order and I'm gonna ask Zach Allen to fill a lead us in prayer for our alma fans.
Thanks for having me. Well, God, I'm not here to ask so much for you to do anything for us as I am to just help us to be aware. To be aware of one another, be aware of ourselves, to be aware of you in the room with us. It's never so much a question of whether or not you're here, but whether or not we are awake. So I just ask that you would keep us awake to the needs of each other, of those in our community. That you would just keep our hearts open. Or we thank you. For all that you are, all that you've done, all that you're doing, all that you will do. We thank you that we're made in your image. We thank you that the truest thing about us is that divine spark within each one of us that is you. I'm asking you to help us to see that first and only in our conversations with one another tonight and beyond. To help us stay reminded that the only adversaries in this room, or anywhere for that matter, are the problems and issues that we seek to solve on behalf of the people of Alma. And what I pray like I always do, that you would help us to see all things as you see them and to see God in all things. In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Johnson, pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk for a roll call.
Roll call. Sandra Co-Patrick? Larry Blossingame?
Here.
James McGee?
Here.
Evan Thatcher?
Here.
Damon Brown? Gary Perry?
Here.
Okay, have a quorum established. We've seen the minutes of the regular meeting of March 16th of this year. So look over and see if there's any questions, additions, corrections. If not, we'll take the motion or receive a motion to approve. I'm over approving. Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, I don't think we have any committee reports. Anyone who signed up for the citizens forum. I'm not aware of any unfinished business, so we'll get into the new business. And first order of business is out here yet. So we have several representatives from the Alma Boys and Girls Club. So ever who is prepared to speak, we're more than welcome to have you.
So a few of you I haven't met. My name is Amber Michaels and I'm the newish CEO. I've been in the position for about eight months now, actually. And the ones of you that don't really know me, I actually live on Mount Magazine. So it's a pretty good drive for me every day. But prior to the accepting of CEO position, I was a librarian for several years. So this is quite different. But when they, this position came available, I definitely, I really was quite comfortable in my librarian role. It's quiet, you don't ever read books at work like they all think you do. But it was comfortable, you know, you're somewhere for a while, you have your staff, it was really comfortable. So I had to do, have a lot of conversations with a lot of different people and prayed over it a whole lot and thought, what an opportunity to get to help that many more people. Like I made a lot of changes in the community that I was in and helped a lot of folks that way. And obviously, this was a need. And so I accepted the position eight months ago and it's been a very fast eight months. We just kind of dove right in, tried to figure out what we were doing. And we're just chucking right along, doing something almost every month with fundraising or an activity for the community and the kids. So we just, you know, we're just, we're doing really good. Things are really looking up. We've got a lot of wins to celebrate, I think. Today, we had day of pairing and they actually painted, started painting our gym. So, and why we chose to do that is because we're trying to bring more events in for the community as well. Like we have a wrestling match coming up, we had a pageant a couple of weekends ago. So we're doing stuff not just for the kids, but for the community as well. And those of you that don't really know what the club does, every day after school, the kids get off the bus. Our numbers have actually increased. We're like between 120 and 130 on our average daily attendance now at the Alma Club. The kids jump off the bus, come in, they get a full meal, and then they get a snack about five o'clock. So they do not go home hungry, it's something that they don't have to worry about. We also provide that service of, hey, the parents don't have to worry about picking their kid up from school. They don't have to worry about who's watching them, they don't have to worry about if they're safe. That's a huge benefit for your community, really. I mean, I'm sure you guys are very intelligent and full of integrity and you recognize the value and you can see like what that looks like, your return on investment, you know, what we invest in our kids. So really, I would like to really start working on community partnerships and obviously that includes the city. You know, we all have very common goals. We want the community to thrive and that really kind of starts with our kids, you know. You want to see long-term results, invest in those kids. So Paris, the city of Paris, is a really great community partner with that club down there. They provide a building for us, they give us a pretty good sun, eighteen thousand dollars a year. They also pay all of the utilities for us and they take care of any maintenance needs that the building has. So it really takes a lot, a lot of burden off of us financially. So I would just kind of like to see different ways that the Alma City can partner with the club to better the community. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a monetary type thing. Because I know everybody is strapped as far as their budget. I mean, at this time of year, you've already, you've normally settled your budgets, you know, October, November, you've got a game plan. But what we were looking at is like lawn care. You're already right there taking care of, like right by the sidewalk. So why not, you know, help us with the rest of it? You know, that saves us about five thousand dollars a year. And five thousand dollars is a significant amount of money for the club. Like that's money that we can put into programming, that's money that we can put back into paying somebody to help watch those kids. Five thousand dollars goes a pretty long way for us. I mean, every little dollar helps. But things like that, like things that the city's already right there, why not just go ahead and mow that little bit of grass for us? And help us out in that way? Or anything else that we can get creative about to help one another? Because I feel like the Boys and Girls Club provides a service for the entire community, the whole family, not just the kids. So why not let's partner together and see how, you know, what can we do more for the city and what can the city help us with? Something for y'all to consider. And we are trying everything that we can to bring, to make that club better, bring more money into it, help those kids more. Do you guys have any questions to me?
We all do a wonderful job in here. Are y'all open on Saturday?
We are not.
Okay, what do you do in the summer?
In the summertime, Monday through Friday, seven thirty to six.
Okay.
So parents have ample time to drop their kids off before work and plenty of time to pick them up before, you know.
We all do a remarkable job, you really do.
Thank you.
Tremendous service. Any questions? Amber or any other coordinator?
Yeah, Emily is actually officially the new unit director for the Alma Club. So she is the go-to person, she knows all the things. Her voice is magical when she talks to kids, you should hear it sometimes, it's really great. And Matthew has stepped up and he does anything we need done, like somehow he just knows how to do it. And so that's what we're doing. And then Erica is the board chair, president, and she is just amazing, she's wonderful, like bless her heart. She has to listen to me every day, every day.
Okay, thank you, Amber. If there's no more questions or any comments or anything? Is you're on the board or you were on the board?
Yes.
Rosemary too, right?
No, no, she was.
Was, okay.
How are you?
I don't know if it's coincidence or not, but the next item of business is Resolution 2023-13. I think it might have been a setup deal, I'm not sure. Entertain a motion to bring to the table, City of Alma Resolution 2023-13, which has to do with the purchase of land from the Boys and Girls Club. So have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Perry, on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, came and visited with Mr. Yardley and I a month ago, I'm not sure how long it was. We, the property that the city owns down where we do the mulching and all that, the Boys and Girls Club owns 3.78 acres that adjoins the property that Ken Colly appraised, I think it was last year, I'll have to double check, appraised it for twenty-six thousand dollars. Mr. Yardley indicated that that would be good future use for the City of Alma. And so we'll entertain any questions or anything about the purchase of the property. And Gary has due it with no fee. I think. And y'all probably know where the property is, it's drawn out on that whole map there. I think maybe, and I'm not positive, I think the council may have talked about this.
Yeah.
In another time. Did he, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, funding for this is coming out of the street. It's. Mark.
I'll be honest.
Now this came up, you know, in passing a while ago, but where's the funding?
I mean, it's an appropriate use of street funds. You know, the recycle center down there is a function of the street department. And so purchasing this land that's adjacent to that would just be expanding an existing facility. And so, yes, using street funds would be appropriate and it would just be paid for out of unappropriated street funds.
Was that your intention in bringing this up?
Yes. Yeah, it was a lady.
No, that's.
So you mentioned future use of this property, what would be your intention of that actually doing that or are we?
It's not a quality piece of property. It's not, it's in the flood plain.
Yeah, it's in the flood plain, it's appropriate for the use that we're using for as a recycle center because we stockpile mulch and leaves and that type of thing. And, you know, we are already using a small portion of this property for some of our stuff. So it would just, you know, we need the room. So it would just be a good purchase for the city.
Make a motion to we adopt Resolution Number 2023-13.
Have a motion with Mr. Evan.
Second.
Second to Jane. Roll call, vote.
Roll call, Sandra Co-Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blossingame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Evan Thatcher?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
I'm staying. Okay. We'll go back to the first part of the program.
I'd like to call you out or anything.
I told her it started at seven thirty. Okay, Ms. Caitlin?
Yes, so I'll be really quick. But do you remember that tree care ordinance? Twenty minutes ago? So part of that ordinance is the formation of a tree board, which handles issues of public tree care, provides a suggested planting list, a prohibited planting list, et cetera, et cetera. And I believe it's a minimum of five members, maximum of seven, five residents of the city, optional two non-resident experts, pretty standard stuff, rotating, et cetera. But we need to inform that. So I'm not quite sure what the protocols would be, what kind of forms we would need to get together, nomination process and everything. But it's highly recommended that we have at least one, if not two, members coming from the council. So if you want to talk amongst yourselves who would be interested in being a part of that, if you know anyone who's intrigued here. But I'm just throwing it out there.
I think you might try. Caitlin, this is.
If we need it, I'll hop on there, I may not be much help.
But we. We have to have one, we have to have a member of one council person.
Right.
And then four other members from the community.
Yes.
Okay, alright. And I don't know the protocol either. We'll, but we will get that done.
Okay.
That's just our commitment, our commitment to you that we will get that done soon. And get with you to meet to figure out how we set it up and what all has to be done with it.
Caitlin, what kind of timeframe are you wanting to look at with something like that? Sorry for the inconvenience, I know we talked about it a while back and.
Yes, yeah, and then there were a bunch of meetings and I kind of hid away for a little bit.
She's been kind, she told me, said we should have already had this done.
So, you know, it's April right now. July would be great to have it up and running. I know it takes a while to get people together, get people interested, you gotta like three conversations. So, so yeah, if we could get it on the ground in July, that would be great. We could get, we could get things in place and have it running by the end of the year then, you know, and kind of get things going for 2024. And the deadline, June might be better because the deadline we applied for Tree City USA for recognition for that is in September. And that is another duty of the tree board is handling that application every year. It's a really simple application, but you have to do it. So it'd be nice to get that done as practice.
Could you just give a broad, quick overview of what this board does?
So the board basically advises the council, it's an advisory board, it doesn't pass any hard fest rules, but advises the council. And it sets, we've got the duties set, coordinating and promoting Arbor Day activities. So the Arbor Day that we had, that was kind of thrown together real quick. You know, we could make that more of a community event, a little more thought put into it, more hands-on dynamic, pulling in more members of the community, sponsorship, et cetera. There's a five-year plan that would be created, maintained, updated, obviously, every five years to plant and maintain trees. So, you know, trying to accomplish diversity goals for our urban canopy as well as recognizing maintenance issues, possible hazards. So that, you know, the tree census, kind of documenting what we already have, coordinating all of those activities. And there's also grants, loans, and other contributions for the urban forests. Seeking those out, writing grants if necessary. And it's basically the Tree City USA application. And then there's the list of recommended trees for planting on city property, just so we can kind of establish, you know, maybe you don't plant red for pears because then you end up with limbs everywhere, but like this instead. Setting forth those recommendations. And there's an annual report. And that's everything, that was not reading.
Any questions or comments for Caitlin? I enjoy watching Caitlin work, she'll be up in a bucket truck and she'll be down there pulling weeds and she stays pretty busy.
Yeah, I'm all over the place.
I will tell you this, I probably shouldn't even do this, that's just the way I am. I took up for you the other day, had a person say, I do not know, I do not understand why the city would pay a young lady a hundred fifty thousand dollars to pull weeds. I show she's a really good weed puller. Get this place sometime.
Yeah, if I could give this place a month.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it, we will get this, we will get this done.
Does everyone have my email or does she need to hand me them?
If not, we'll give it to them.
Okay, yeah, if we just do that, next time I'll insert emails.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Need a motion to bring to the table Resolution 2023-14?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, this resolution has to do with the disposal of worthless personal property, which happens to be the Alma Fire Department. Chief, is there anything you want to speak to? Well, we have to have authorization to get rid of things that are worthless.
Right, it's just old stuff that's more like cleaning house. Stuff that's no good, it's outdated, stuff like that, that's been laying around. Is there anything else, Sean, that we need to put in there?
I think, have you.
There was an attachment.
Yeah, have you revised the attachment? So I had included some things on there that could be sold for scrap metal. And so P B has asked me to remove that from that exhibit. As long as it's less than twenty thousand dollars total, that same statute allows the mayor to sell it, or the mayor's representative to sell it for scraps.
So maybe a couple hundred dollars.
So if y'all, if P B will tell you which things to mark out, we'll mark it out on when you adopt. And if we just adopt it as revised.
The markup would be the twenty-six SCBA bottles and the seven bottle holders.
I think Mr. Reguiz got one, so we can steal his as the official copy.
Aren't you seeing that one?
I don't know. That's almost shocking, but he's got it.
It was sent to me from my apartment.
I did it, I sent it to everybody.
Were there just those two items that were striking?
Whatever he says got them, whatever he says did.
Yeah.
Unless, if you see something else on there that looks like it has that one.
Just those two that were striking?
Yes, just those twenty-six SCBA bottles and the seven bottle holders. It's probably not that much, but I mean.
Any other discussions? Have a motion to approve?
Second.
I'm second. Roll call.
Roll call. Sandra Co-Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blossingame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yeah.
Evan Thatcher?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the final plat approval of West Column Meadows. Cody, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, I figured I'd explain all of this because it's dealing with all the rezonations as well. If you look at the West Column Meadows, final plat, as I said, you guys should have the smaller copy. There's also a giant copy, right by my mic, on the whiteboard, it's a part green. So on block five, they're wanting to rezone that R1A, which is just smaller, single-family homes. And that's also gonna be a subdivision, but this is also the pre-subdivision, basically. And on block four, on the northern, is R2, is what they're gonna be wanting to rezone it. And that's just gonna be a couple duplexes. And behind it on the south part of block four is C2. They're gonna wanna put mini storages and that's gonna be another subdivision as well. And then the tract right next to it, to the east, along that creek, kind of by.
RV Park.
RV Park.
Crabtree.
Crabtree. Just across that would be C2 as well. And that's just basically, I'm helping rehab, whenever they expand, they're gonna wanna develop that area as well.
So you're talking about this area as being C2?
No, this, this part. I know it's confusing.
So you said, so that's R1A and this is?
C2.
C2 and this is R2.
This section here.
I'm sorry, very much. This is all gonna be R1A. And then we list four shoes on right here.
Yes.
No, that should be up right on there. Yeah. And then this area right over here, that'll be C2. Cause it's not part of the subdivision, so. And if you want to share that with James.
This is just down from work, Column Lane.
Yes, it's all that undeveloped land right there.
Yeah, okay. Yes, I know where she is, yes.
We're Column Lane from the north and Ray Lane beyond the west.
All right, Cody, I already asked you this, but not in front of everybody, is this appropriate? Does it match what we have or is that what you explained it? And you asked, yes it does. So that's the whole point of having the layman's plan is to make sure stuff like this follows our targets.
Even with the mini storage or whatever that is?
Yes, the, I'd say it's in transition, so it's like commercial or high residential, high-density residential, so. And then, of course, the R1A, that's single-family housing, and that's all residential anyway, so. And they'll be accessing off that Ray Lane portion, not Column Lane. Not be any cut-through traffic with mini storages and whatnot.
From Ray Lane?
Yes.
So all the mini storages can be through Column Lane?
Yeah, that way there's not any, they're trying to cut through.
Yeah.
But I don't like cul-de-sacs, but it works, I understand it, so. Help protect the property in this subdivision.
I apologize. Down there, the plan, you decided that they need a bigger exit or additional fourth party? Are we gonna run?
Because, because of the work that was being done in the subdivision streets itself, if this coming off of separate, I think that that would probably be handled separately, right? That C2, we would need an additional entrance for this, they would need their entrance to that. Yeah, we haven't got that party yet. Well, when we get to that, we won't be having to access this through a subdivision, right? Yeah, we're gonna see whatever they propose and girlfriend there, we're gonna have tons of questions.
So this is just more or less is?
This is setting up for.
They need this stuff first before they even start coming up with this.
Like all of these slots up here, they weren't even subdivided before, so they need to be divided. And then this kind of helps align some stuff that works for them too, so. Did anyone on the planning commission have any issues with pushing this final plat forward? There were. There was no issues, it was just questions about the future development, really the rezonations aren't part of it, so. rezoning's part of it, so. The final plat was absolutely, I'm just telling you all this because it's going to come up in the next.
In the next four hours.
So we, we need to make a motion to approve this one?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm making a motion to approve the West Column Meadows final plat.
Motion to Mr. Thacker. Thank you. Patrick, roll call.
Roll call. Sandra Co. Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasengame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
All right. Cody just went over these next ordinances, but we still do need to bring them up and vote on them individually. I need a motion to bring to the table ordinance number 2023-4.
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to suspend the reading, suspend the three readings and read by title only.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Co. Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasengame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yeah.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
This ordinance is, as Cody explained with the other, it all has to do with these same properties. This particular one has to do with just the ordinance about changing the rezoning. I think we brought it in last month, and there was some clarification that the city attorney wanted, and we went back to planning commission and it's back.
This, this, I mean, this portion of the zoning code, you know, doesn't really have anything to do with the subdivision or anything like that. This is just from last month being sent back.
And this comes addressed the.
Townhouses, and also we're adding in apartments as well, because we're not zoning for that, so.
And there were some minimum, I had the planning commission, there was like some setbacks and things like that that were added.
Yeah, we just, we cleaned up a lot of it, we actually spent a decent amount of time on just playing out some of that language and setting some, I think we changed some of the side setbacks and also the rear setbacks.
Yep. Yeah, flood utilities and things like that, I think was one of the.
Yeah, literally, Reggie was geared up and explained some stuff, but he's experienced over years. I mean, yeah, I think I am. Sean, with this one, was there anything additional on this one from what we discussed last time that need to maybe be addressed?
So the, the concerns were just procedural and then clarification from the planning commission, so as long as it's, as long as these revisions have come back through the planning commission, I'm, I'm satisfied.
Okay. And Cody, I missed the last planning commission meeting, but was everything? Yes, and I actually sent that ordinance back to Sean Chapin, I believe Peggy too, and just said, hey, you know, is everything addressed that we addressed at that meeting? And there was no response, so I'm assuming that's good. I think, I think this addresses any of the concerns that we, we had before. I'm glad that we've got the department stuff in here now, although that's been a, even before me and you were, were part of that, that's been kind of a sore spot, so it's good to see that added to this. Anybody have any reservations on this?
I failed to read the title, which was an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for Alma, Arkansas, repealing conflicting provisions and declaring emergency.
Now you can make a motion?
Yeah.
I make that motion.
Second. All in, flip, roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Co. Patrick?
Who needs emergency?
Larry Blasengame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yeah.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
And we have an emergency?
I'm sorry. Yes. Roll call. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Co. Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasengame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yeah.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
And we have an emergency?
I'm sorry. Yes. Roll call. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Co. Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasengame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yeah.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
This is an ordinance for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Alma, Arkansas, and it has to do with lot five and West Column Meadows, moving from R1 to R1A. Yeah, it's a better, I should, we've got that earlier.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2023-5.
Second, Mr. McGee. Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Co. Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasengame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yeah.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
For this approved. Need a motion to bring to the table ordinance 2023-6.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to suspend the three readings and read by title only.
So move.
Second. All in favor? Need a motion to suspend the three readings and read by title only.
So.
Roll call. Look, you got a second, you have a second, you got a roll call?
Roll call, Sandra Co. Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasengame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yeah.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
This is an ordinance for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Alma, which has to do with lot four, West Column Meadows, from R1 to R2.
As the north, turn north part, sorry? Yes. Okay. I move, we got ordinance 2023-6.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Co. Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasengame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yeah.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
Need a motion to bring, excuse me, to the table ordinance 2023-7.
So move.
Mr. Blasengame?
Second.
Second, Mr. Thacker. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I need a motion to suspend the three readings and read by title only.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Co. Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasengame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yeah.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
Question for you, Cody, I'm sorry, I keep asking questions on those, you're pretty much just formality at this point. It says back half, are we splitting that lot right down the middle or not? No, it's a. Do we have that marked out somewhere though? Yeah, I thought I sent it out to y'all, because Chapin was asking where exactly the lot was, and from what I remember, if you look at the subdivision, it's basically. Sorry, I, I know we talked about it when they were here, but.
The back half is three.
The portion is the RV. But we do have something else we can do with this that has the attachment or whatever the show specifically. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it has the legal description, so I just need to plug in that software and just move it out. All right. I move we got ordinance 2023-7.
A motion, we have a second. Second. Period. Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Co. Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasengame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yeah.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
Need a motion, excuse me, bring to the table ordinance 2023-8.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to suspend the three readings and read by title only.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Co. Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasengame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yeah.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
This is an ordinance for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Alma, which is owned by Michael Morton, from R1 to C2.
And that's, Cody, just to double check, that's the tract that's next to the creek, right?
That's, yeah, that's, it's all floodplain, also they're wanting to expand eventually.
Make a motion about, or ordinance 2023-8.
Got a motion, Mr. Blasengame, we have a second?
Second.
Was that day driven, did y'all suspend the reading? We did not.
We did not.
We did.
We did.
Did you?
Yeah.
I thought you were on that one, I think we brought it between now and we suspended the reading on that one. We suspended it with James McGee and Gary Perry.
Y'all pay attention. Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Co. Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasengame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
What have we got all this? Okay. The next item of business is department reports, and I think we'll start with Mr. Parsons. And did you want, you have this?
Yes.
To bring it to you.
Uh, declared by, one thing on the equipment list, the fifteen air packs. It's, there's two below the bottle holder, one is a scratch after two, that's another scrap. Fifteen SCBA air pack, that need to be added into the.
So, so I, I think just make a motion to amend that previous resolution striking that I, I make the motion to amend. Second.
Thank you all.
All in favor, aye?
Aye. All right. Last month, we had seven calls. Green medical, fire alarm, one smoke, chemical investigation, I think they were, don't know what they were thinking, who knows. One grass fire, ladder truck is still con light, they had replaced some other things in it, should be several weeks maybe, should be getting it back. Two of the trucks, the other two, the three, we've got the LED lights, Auto Flex, finished all those up, got those two trucks done. Engine eight, we replaced the hose bed cover, it's been a twenty-year-old truck, got that done. Last Saturday, we had the duck oven cook off with Casa, because we didn't win, this department didn't beat us. We had a blast. There was a lot of people, a lot of people there. Next year, we'll up a game, and we will finish ahead of.
Do you know how much money you raised for Casa?
I don't know. They, there was, I say there's over a hundred fifty people there, and I think they were thinking maybe a hundred, and it was.
Was it closer, did they just blow you away?
I don't know. I think they just blew us. Fire department, and I won't speak for chief owner, we didn't even get in running, we didn't get best outfit, we didn't get nothing, but we had a blast. I think we, we did.
You served the community, you did a good call.
Yes. Last week, we did a, a walk-through in Morel Targets, set them up on our first Knox box. Fire department has keys to that, will be able to respond a little bit quicker to get inside a building. We have those on all our commercial buildings, that's where we're headed. And that's about it, besides, I don't know if y'all got this municipal league supplement, it's two hundred forty dollars, if y'all ready to do it, it's two hundred forty dollars, and it's an insurance supplemental to the municipal league. I would like to see if we could do that for our fire department.
Minimum is twenty per firefighter, so six hundred?
Right.
That's fantastic, I think we could do it.
Yeah, I think y'all just want, so we probably hadn't budgeted for it, so if y'all just wanted to, I don't know where you want it to come from, but some, some kind of affirmative action on your part since it's not a budget.
So, so just.
It's, it's six hundred bucks a year.
You can pay that out of general fund, right?
For the entire.
You just can't pay it out of street, other than that.
That was my next question.
Water department.
You can have a water department.
We, I'm going.
Would we do a separate line item number for that, or how would we?
I think that would be appropriate.
I think, yeah.
How do we track that? I would kill it. I would recommend paying out a salary, just.
Biz bit.
Yeah, it's just easier.
Well, they're, they're volunteers, so I really don't want to come out of salary.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, it's a, it's reimbursement, is what it's called, I'm not just saying salary line, but it's not salary, it's volunteer pay line.
Is it necessarily reimbursement back to the, it's not reimbursement back to.
No.
No.
I see, I see what you're saying.
I don't, I don't think we, that's with that, I think it's we feel a bunch of other stuff, we'll get a refund.
That's great.
Just be like.
Why don't we just spend out of general fund, good luck.
Well, for the time, for this year, let's just pay it, let's just pay it out of general fund, and then for next year. I mean, it's a tab. And then we can figure out how to line item it out, pay it next month. But we know that, yeah, but we know that it's going to be roughly six hundred dollars for this year, and then whatever the cost of increase that they make.
So we need a motion, and a second.
I know, is there near increase? I don't think there is.
It hasn't said, but who knows?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so.
I make a motion that we go forward with paying for the firefighter supplemental income protection and then the bid program out of the general fund.
Up to?
I second it, I second it. Roll call.
Yeah.
Up to six hundred, I mean.
Yeah, I think we.
Is that what, is that what it would cost us?
It's six hundred dollars for the department.
We have third firemen.
Okay.
If I were y'all, I would, maybe just a little way over there.
Okay.
Okay.
Of just thousand dollars.
Yeah, good. Have a motion, have a second, roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Co. Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasengame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Kurt?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
All right. You're good.
Thank you.
Chief Warner?
Thank you.
All right. Starting out with the budget real quick. Overall, our budget looks in good shape. We did. We did receive the first quarter reimbursement from the schools, which reflects that about twenty four percent collected in that lineup. One item on the expenses that kind of sticks out is our department expense. We were thirty seven percent, which is way above where we should be, but there's several things that we pay out of that in the first quarter. Like our dispatch fee, report software, IT, legal defense, all of that. So all those are pretty big payments, so. I made on some equipment. Got some good news last night, or last week. Got a call that we have two new police cars that showed up at the lot. So they're not the ones that were assigned to us when we ordered them. They ended up being some that another department had ordered, and then now they don't want, so they they called us, the dealership did. We had, so we're, I've put our name on them, and it were replaced the two that we actually had ordered. So one of them will actually be a Tahoe, and then the other one will be a Pursuit Red pickup. So we, those have showed up at the lot. Bad thing on it, since everything else, equipment. They're having trouble getting some of the equipment to do the outfit on it. So and plus, there's, I think they said they had a hundred and thirty cars ahead of us, so it may be up to three months before we actually get those outfitted and get them.
Do chief, did y'all order the extra things, or does the dealership order them for you?
A little bit of both. There's some things that we order. There's some things that their dealer also can get a better price, so they they order it. And a lot of those things, they keep in stock, but things that might be different, we do different than other departments, then they have to order those. Cameras that were approved for the cars, you know, I told you that those came in. When we got to going through that, we were missing some some pieces of that. We have not paid for them yet, so it's a good thing. We actually threatened a couple of weeks ago to box everything up and send it back. I think that kind of got the ball rolling some, but. So since we didn't get some of that stuff, we're still working with them to get it. They're keep saying that they're sending it. But until we get that, they've kind of pushed our deployment date on those back. It was scheduled for actually next week. But we've we've had to push that back. The next available deployment date that they had where they come in and set us all up on the new software is the last week in June. So hopefully that will work out. We'll have everything by then and be able to have those up and running. Radios, I talked to the radio company last week. Most of our repeater equipment is in or waiting on radios still. So they can't start installing the repeaters until they actually have the radios, so we're we're kind of on a, holding there. Tasers, all of our officers have been trained on the new tasers, and we're carrying those now. The ones that we replaced are old tasers. There's some that don't work. There's some that are are still usable. They work. They're just outdated. You can't update the software on them anymore, things like that. And the law allows us to donate those to another government agency that obviously would have use for them. So I would like to donate a couple of those to the Mulberry Police Department if you guys don't object to that. They don't have tasers, they can't afford tasers. And even though these are old, I mean, they they still work. But if you guys are okay with that, I'm going to donate some of those to Mulberry, and that will help them out. And we don't have a use for them now that we received news.
So we can still motion on that?
It's my understanding when I just have to note, in the law, it just says I have to notify the council, so.
No liability on our part. It's something that.
No, we we would actually, I think we would come up with a letter saying that we donated, and and I would sign, the Mulberry chief would sign.
Sure.
And that releases us from. Officer Goode, which is our our last officer to be behind her, graduated the police academy in the first week of April. He's now started his field training with with one of our certified field training officers. In so far, he's done a great job. Upcoming events, just a reminder, this Saturday will be at Walmart, ten AM to two PM, the National Prescription Group Take Back, where it's settled nationwide. Where people can, in there, expired, unneeded, unwanted prescription, over the counter medication, we'll collect in those. We're also, at that same time, we're doing a stuff, the squad car there at Walmart, and we'll be taking the items for the Hamilton House. May sixteenth, the law enforcement tour run for Special Olympics will be coming through. It should be around eleven AM. They should be coming into town. They may be running a little bit early and a little bit late. If you guys have never seen that, then they'll come in sixty four highway and go straight through town, but it's it's. It's good to see. We've got law enforcement officers from this area. We've got some officers that will be around here and will be escorting. If you've never seen that, we encourage you to come out. And then this one's a ways out, but if you mark it on your calendar, Saturday, June the third, will be the date for the family fun day. And that's the one that, this will be the third year, that the hand to hand foundation in the school district's department, to do the family fun day over at the high school. And last year, I was in the dunk tank part of that day. And so when that topic came up this year, I volunteered our council members to set our dunk tank, so I expect you guys to be there, especially. Other than that, I don't have anything. If you guys have questions.
Any questions for Chief Warner?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Mark Yardley?
Well, definitely keeping my short. Just a little note, we had a spring cleanup last Saturday at a middle school where we had the dumpsters available for citizens who'd be willing to bring their stuff. We had a few confrontations with a few people. We're not signalists, but believed that they were, and so we had to turn some away and figure y'all did people a call, but maybe did, maybe didn't. But anyway, we ended up filling up three dumpsters, and we still had to turn people away at the end, so. You know, I don't know. That's that's that seems to be a really popular thing, to provide this to the community. And as y'all know, we have this service as part of our contract with River Valley Waste Removal. It's 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 actually written in the contract that they'll provide this twice a year. And so we we make conditions on people using it, that it's those who are paying for trash service. Those are the ones paying for those dumpsters to be there, so. If you if you if anyone asks you about that, and why we're limiting that, it's because it's being paid for by those who have residential trash service in the city. So we don't let commercial people use it, and we don't let those outside the city limits who are not on the city trash. We don't let them use it, so. Anyway, just something y'all need to be aware of in case someone approaches you about it. So other than that, this this Friday evening, tomorrow evening, we'll start the water main flushing program on the north side of Interstate forty. So they'll be, they'll they'll start that about ten o'clock Friday night, start flushing lines and run it run through the night. And some years, it takes longer than others, but we're hoping that it'll it'll be through sometime Saturday night. If not, they'll also work on it Sunday night as well. Anyway, so if you see wet streets, don't be alarmed. There's flushing hydrants in that area, so. And as always, we 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 let people know that there's potential that they'll have some discolored water as part of the flushing. They just run it for a few minutes after the flushing, I mean, after they turn the faucet on, it should clear right up, but sometimes that is resolved, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else to share than that. I'm just going to keep it short.
All right.
Wish y'all any questions. Any questions for Mark?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Cody, you can't have much left to say.
I already gave my report. I already had six items on it. We want to know all about this development. My my best Philly magazine person, though, for a week or more.
Yeah.
So, yeah, three permits issued during the month of March, total revenue of thirty five hundred and nineteen dollars. Two commercial remodels that's issued. One of those permits included Johnson dermatology is coming into the old, or not old, but newer, used to be pharmacy along Highway sixty four between Randy Mile and then Dr. Simon. So good thing for.
They're going to do like five hundred thousand.
It's a half a million dollar remodel. And so we already have a ten percent increase on furnace for this year compared to last year, so we're already on good pace, and I know with the with the hail, we're already going to be busy in the next couple of months, that's for sure, probably all of summer. Our Main Street application was submitted at the end of last month, and we got word, I know my report says late April, early May, first interview. It's actually going to be late June, so that's what they told us, and that's even better since I've been swamped the past week or two, so. RV park along Highway sixty four is, they're starting new dirt, and so I've been receiving some phone calls about what's going on out there and trying to help ease the pain, I guess. But of course, ironically, it's all people that are not living inside city. But rain has also made progress slow right now, so. It's raining today again, so it'll probably rain tomorrow. Trail counters picked up March twenty ninth, so the data that I received on that, we averaged about thirty two people a day during that time period. The highest day was Sunday, March twenty six, over spring break, with a count of eighty eight people. Some rainy days affected, of course, accounts, but we still average, if you spread that average throughout the whole, it's almost a thousand, so things like ninety ninety two is what it actually came out to. Still good numbers. Still going to get some more data. Just kind of waiting for the rain to kind of clear out a little bit.
Did you pick up the count, remove the counters, take them out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I'm sure.
They're probably going to tell us it if they did, but that fails, so. Not going to go to a planning commission. I think you guys are pretty not, but the planning commission's been doing. And that's pretty much it. Unless you guys have any questions. Trying to wrap mine up early.
Thank you. Still still has one opening on the.
Yep, still one opening. That hasn't changed.
And that's inside, inside the.
Yeah, inside the city limits, the worst one, so. I think that's the one that we keep kind of.
Yeah, filled it.
Yeah, we filled it, and then it got.
Yeah.
It came open the next month.
He needs something else to do.
Y'all can keep me pretty good.
Yeah. Any any other questions for Cody? Boy, they they have really been, they've been busy even for the hell.
Yeah, there's there's lots of, I noticed, seemed like you were talking about pulling out of my driveway there for how this going to place it, work being done, dirt being moved, so. Yeah, you guys about to say the progress expansion that's about to come too, just waiting on the preliminary file on that. That's exciting. You guys have done a great job. You and Peewee both.
Really have.
Killed it.
Great job.
Honestly, Peewee's obviously a big two chill. We know he's doing my job.
If you haven't been home yet, they started a new house down the corner.
Yeah, I saw him digging up dirt this morning. My goodness, yesterday it was grass, now it's dirt, so that's exciting to see.
Thank you, Cody. Don't be god. Okay, finance report?
Okay. So I posted the twenty twenty two financial statement. It's been posted on the city website. Posted here at City Hall, the public library, water department, and the post office. So we only have it posted in two places, but. The only place I didn't post it at was the Boys and Girls Club. The audit for twenty twenty one and twenty two is still underway. They're probably going to be here till June or July, so. We've been working on printing aquatic park passes here in the office. We've had some technical difficulties with our old process, so we quickly sprung into action, a new a new thing to help out with that. Basically, we're, long story short, we are printing. I created a quick little template, and we're printing it off, and then we're laminating it. So it's a laminated card instead of the the previous plastic cards that we were printing on. So I guess the the biggest thing that I'd like to talk about is CenterPoint. Now, CenterPoint is, I'd like to get away from Ncode. Using Ncode, it's it's outdated, it's antiquated. We use it, and Van Buren uses it. Everyone else uses either CenterPoint, and if they can't afford CenterPoint, then they use. Sorry. If they can't use CenterPoint, then they use basically QuickBooks Pro, but QuickBooks Pro is not appropriate for what we do. CenterPoint, I did the research on it. I actually met with the with the representative via Zoom or via Zoom. And it's one of those things where, like, he showed me how it works and things like that. Ncode for for better, best understanding of Ncode is, it's a it's a closed off Excel spreadsheet. For example, when Larry pointed out that the revenues were negative, right, they're put in negative, well, when you're going in and putting in a budget, like, there's a separate place for the revenue, and there's a separate place for the expense. So ideally, in my mind, and dealing with with all kinds of different software, if there's going to be two places, you wouldn't have to put one in as a negative, right? Especially when on other aspects of Ncode, negative doesn't work. So you can't input negative, so it's like, well, why would I put in negative, right? So by doing so, it actually corrected it, but it's a manual thing, so it translates, whatever I put in is what it gives me back. CenterPoint, over the long run, I mean, it'll cost, obviously, to switch over, but over the long run, it'll be more cost effective. As far as the maintenance fees, updates, as far as user, it's it's much easier to use. We have issues trying to create reports, especially when things are being FOIA requested. It creates the reports that we want. We can basically tell it, hey, take this off, don't show people's socials, don't show people's deductions, things like that, that aren't. That that are protected by FOIA, I should say. And so it's one of those things where, as far as accountability, and as far as being able to keep records better, it's geared for that. As opportunity to attach invoices, whether it's PDF or or whatever kind of document, I mean, you scan it in, and it just attaches it right to the actual, so. It'll make things easier. I have the price and everything like that. I just, I don't want to do anything until after the audit, so that's the reason. But I'm I'm telling you now, so we can be on the lookout, you know, I'm, I asked for some article money. Anyway, it's one of those things where it's going to make a huge difference, and with that, I would include, because talking to Daniel Mahan, our IT guy, our server is about, it's live end. So with that, we would update our server, and then we would have this new software, and we would own the, we would own it, and then we just pay for support each year, and it's. It's about five thousand dollars cheaper for the support than what we have now with Ncode. And then the last thing I need to mention is the twenty twenty two IRS taxes. Basically, your FICA and social security for employment has been paid. They were paid late. It wasn't understood that we needed to pay that every month, and with state taxes, we pay that, we can pay that quarterly. We we've actually started paying that on a monthly basis as well, so we look at that. So we will, we will more than likely, excuse me, face some penalties, but I don't know what those will be. It's one of those situations where we received information, they sent us a a letter basically saying that we had a balance of like three hundred dollars, and that was from twenty twenty. So they're a little behind. I don't know what it's going to be. It'll probably be in a couple of years that we actually, they send us a bill saying, hey, this is what you owe for paying late type situation, so. Not trying to hide anything from anyone. It's it's literally one of those cases where I didn't know the report that we were sending or that we can print off from Ncode does not match what actually gets sent, because it's deducted from the payroll. And so we have to send the payroll deduction report, that amount of money, not the separate report that you print off from Ncode, that you would think that would be the report, so.
Will we see this reflected in the funding audit that's taking place right now for twenty twenty two?
You will see it as far as the way it reports on the overall statement, because we knew it was going to happen, but we didn't know exactly how much it was going to be. Like, basically, the overall balance will be less.
But this will be a finding on the audit most likely, since it wasn't paid.
Potentially, yes. Yes.
Is it going to put us into any type of issues with seeking like federal funding or grants or anything, you know?
Not that I know of. No. She she hasn't mentioned anything like that. She just, she did pull us to the side and mention, hey, this this may be a finding. She didn't specify. Because as before that time, she didn't understand that it had been paid type situation, so. It wasn't in Ncode. It wasn't in Ncode, we don't, we can't pay that from Ncode, it's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it, it wouldn't show up on.
It's a weird thing, it, it deducts from Ncode from the payroll when I run payroll, so let's say it's ten thousand dollars. It, it takes that off and gives you a credit and puts it into like a separate account for you to pay later. So it's already been deducted, but it's not been paid.
It hasn't been sent out.
But it has been paid as of now, so.
What was the approximate amount?
It was, uh, two hundred thousand dollars.
And that was over the course of a year, two years?
Um, quarter one was paid.
Of twenty twenty?
Two.
Okay, so, okay.
So that's two, two, three, and four.
Yes.
Okay, and then we're, and then twenty twenty-three?
We're current.
We're current, okay.
Yes. That's all I have.
Any, uh, excuse me, Sandra, you have a question.
I was just gonna ask, how much are the passes for the water park?
That's a good question, uh, tomorrow, the sale ends.
This is this ten inch tomorrow.
Yes, so they're, right now, it, right now, they're one eighty for, um, a family of four, so. And then if they're like shorter than forty-eight inches, they're cheaper, um. If they're taller than forty-eight inches, then it's, it's that same one eighty. And I just, I just make the passes, I really don't, I don't know much about that.
Any other, uh, questions for, for Chris?
Well, just going back to the payments and that with being, you know, and, you know, the findings on the audit are not, it's not official. Right, because the audit hasn't been completed yet, but you know, we're gonna, it'll, it'll be probably notated, just looking at it, so. What are the other things that we need to be either A on the lookout, additional trainings, whatever else along those lines that may be creeping up that may be slipping through right now? Because I mean, obviously, this two hundred thousand dollars, I mean, sitting in an account, that, you know, that's, that's there, I get it, different systems and all. But are there any policies and procedures, do we have like a master sheet somewhere that says we need to be checkmarking these things every month? Going forward, is there some kind of guide, you know, just, because I know there's been a lot of transition.
I get you.
Want to make sure that, hey, we're not getting ourselves in, we need to, we need to take care of the documentation side to make sure that.
There's what I, what I've observed in a short period of time, there, there is a list of things that are required and when they're required, but I'm not sure they have been followed very closely. That's just my observation.
Okay.
So I received a list from Shawna, and it was, it was very general, like, one says get with Sean on October four. It just says Millich, that's all it says, so, so. I mean, for the most, for the most part, it's there, but it's very vague, and it's, there's no, like, hey, you need to do this, this is what you need, this is the form that you need. None of that is, exists. Um, the closest thing that we have to that is we have a book, and it basically says kinda how to run some payroll in Ncode. Um, it doesn't teach or have any information about all the other stuff that we have to do with papers, law fee, any of that. So it's, it's been a, it's been a learning curve, um, for sure, it's been one of those things in which, um, I've, I've been teaching, um, Rhonda, for example, I, I trained her in payroll the other day, and so she actually ran this last payroll, um, for the General and the Street Fund, because I wasn't shown that, and it's just one of those things, like, we just have to get things in place, and I, I do, I'm trying to transfer all that knowledge over, but it's, until it's learned, it's not there. I mean, honestly, there's no record of half of the stuff that we needed to, to know.
Well, that's, that's always a concern, right, especially with all the transitions.
I'm confident that once the audit's over, we will have all that in place.
Okay, okay. Or we at least have an action plan.
Yes, well, we, we don't right now.
Okay.
We don't, but, uh, we're working toward that, and we'll know exactly what we need when the audit is completed.
Is this the only thing that's shown up so far as we're going through some of these audits that, uh, may be problematic for us moving forward?
There may be some issues with, um, previous record keeping, as far as, for twenty twenty-one, for example, there is some issues where, something was paid from, um, like an email instead of paid from like an invoice, so that's, that's the only thing.
Okay.
That I know of right now, that's the only thing that's been shared, but.
You said right now, the, the targeted timeline for both the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two audits.
At least.
I wouldn't say finalized, but whatnot is June to July.
June, July.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll.
I'd say June at the earliest.
And that's the preliminary piece.
Yes, yes.
What, what are you gonna talk to that?
I, I shouldn't say, I think we will have a finding, not be the final audit, but we'll have what she's gonna report to her supervisor for the final report.
And they do an exit, an exit interview type situation, and then they, they let you know, and then they, they'll send the reports. Last year, the twenty twenty, yeah, twenty twenty report, um, they sent it like a couple of months later, like everyone on the council received. So, we, I guess they have to decide whether it's something that they have to necessarily, or.
There's different kinds of findings, you know, like there's.
There are.
They make us aware of the findings that are reportable, things like that.
And then it's, yeah, it just kind of goes up.
Should get it. Any other questions? I'll finalize it with the, the parks department, I'll start with, uh, the trail, the, Evan might be, I don't know how many, how many use the trail. The horrible rain we had, what, three, four weeks ago, the, it washed away part of the new bike trail. We have a bid to replace that part for nine thousand dollars. And, uh, I, I don't know, it's my decision to make, but I have a hard time, you know, the people that prepared it, or prepared the trail, who charged us nine thousand dollars to, to this point, but unfortunately, you know, you can't get equipment in there, they can. And they're saying it'll take, uh, staff of three, and that, their labor is sixty-four hundred, and the equipment is, I mean, the equipment and tools and everything to move the rocks around is another two thousand dollars, so. I talked to Jim Warnock, and he's been up there, looked at it, and he said, you know, you're gonna have to hire somebody to fix it, he said, I don't think.
So that, this isn't something, I mean, they finished this up, what, last year?
Cut the ribbon in September or something.
Yeah, I'm not saying it was November.
So we didn't, we didn't last a year, they didn't stand by their stuff even for the first three or six.
Cody speaks it out better than I, but.
Yeah, yeah, basically that, so, and so they're not, but I talked to them, I was like, hey. One big rainstorm comes through, and, you know, we haven't even finished up the grant really, like, signing the paperwork as we showed with our doc last month, and so it's just kinda like, well, we can do it for this time around, what? So if they're not gonna stand by their work, I would like to go on the record and say, I don't wanna work with them again. Um, if they can't stand by their work for a year, then that's kind of sorry.
So it was less than a year, less than.
Less than a year, and I don't, I don't wanna see them on the bits for the next time.
I guess, I guess my question's, because I know all contracts have some kind of an act of God thing in there, right? There's usually something, but was this in one of the, I remember Mayor Martin talking about it, was, was this one of the honorable sections where they were having issues or not?
It's basically on the approach for the bridge, really.
Okay, and is this, because they had redesigned.
Didn't they redo that area?
Yeah, that's what I.
Yeah, they actually had to do it a lot.
Yeah.
So you would think that it would have been taken care of because they had to redo it.
And there's no guarantee it won't happen again.
Well.
We need to talk to them about that because we're coming into the rainy season, and I don't wanna pay this every time it rains. Uh, I think that's gonna story.
Yeah, so we'll visit with them, uh.
Yeah, and I can get with some trail people that I know on other companies, and we can just probably just bid it out, really. It's like, all right, well, whoever can, give the best quote, and hopefully, hopefully a different group.
Matthew's been in there sharing. I don't know how, don't mean to involve you, but is it something that, unre- un- we're terrible? I mean, is it, what can we do to make sure it doesn't happen again type thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just sitting on the side of the hill.
Talking about those that are up there.
Sitting on the side of the hill, it rains, it's gonna come down on us every time, I mean, I, I don't know what the answer is.
I don't either. That was, that was a big thing to do is to look at that. That was a big rain event, but also, yeah, I mean, we've had big rain events before, so it's, you know, more than likely gonna happen, and.
Does the bridge get a budget?
No.
They get so.
We didn't.
I know, I mean, that contract is. So.
But we'll.
Yeah, yeah, you'll, you'll do the.
We're gonna visit with them, and let Sean visit with us about what rights we might have there. We're not gonna just pay a nine thousand dollar, for sure, matter of fact, well, we'll just visit with them, and. And also with the trail, this is a minor issue, but, uh, uh, some of the signs are beginning to be replacing, and down, down on the Frisbee Golf, pretty far, the stations have been stolen, they just pulled them up, someone took them all, so. But that's just ongoing things we have to take care of, and the mowing season has started, but, uh, get to the aquatic park, there's a few new items there. Last year, we were open sixty days, this year we'll be open about eighty days, weather and all permitted. Uh, we're gonna start two weekends before opening, because we've got parties booked, Saturday, Sunday, Saturday, Sunday, not the week. And last year, the park closed August the fifth, we're gonna try to keep it open to August the thirteenth full-time, and then the last two weeks of August before Labor Day, we're gonna also try to open on Saturday and Sunday there, so we should pick up, we possibly can pick up twenty days, we'll see. Uh, last year, we had seventy-one employees, this year we're at thirty-eight, we'll probably end up with forty to forty-two. Uh, ninety percent of those are repeats, that's good, and we're this year not having anyone under sixteen years old. Uh, the party's rental, uh, last year it was seven hundred dollars in the evening and night, it was six hundred dollars in the morning or something, we've moved it all to seven hundred dollars. Uh, we've already booked twenty-four of them, uh, gonna have new hours, we're gonna open an hour earlier, last year they opened at noon, this year we're gonna open at eleven. We're gonna open Sunday from one to five, it's never been open on Sunday, uh, and I think that'll be a good day, they, they got it, I'll pass this out, I should have done that before, but y'all are due a reading, I'm not listening to you. But anyway, this is, uh, we're starting a new birthday, uh, party thing, we've had three people sign up, and these are, these are just supplies and things that gonna be different this year. And that's really about, I think, uh, the water start, of course, the water started going in today, but we're gonna start putting water in it, uh, weeks on Monday, uh, twenty-four, whatever the week from that Monday is, and then, uh, have about three weeks to get the chemicals right and all of those type things, but that's about, and uh, I've done a lot of work done, I've not done much, but the ladies have done an awful lot of work, and, and I'm optimistic about we can, uh, cut our losses down there, I won't be talking about breaking even or making money, but I think, I think we'll do a good job of managing what we can manage. Uh, the unforeseen things, weather, cost, uh, repairs, if you can't predict, you know, we'll just have to deal with that, but I think the things we can't control, I think we'll do a decent job down there this year, and, uh, that's about all I have, unless there's any questions or anything.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Just go back to the discussion from Joe Knott at the, uh.
The Gators?
The, okay, the private event discussion, do we go ahead and confirm and communicate to the ladies that we're not.
We're not charging them this year, like, no, right, right.
But, but also that when we, when we do that, the agreement was that we would address it as a private event, not as though we lost this much money today.
Oh, yeah, and that, and that, to my knowledge, that was never, I wasn't there, I shouldn't say that, it was miscommunicated.
My understanding was that if communicated then, they would be responsible for the amount that we would lose.
They shouldn't have been told that, and they were, and that will not be the case.
They were giving, they were giving a number, and that number was significantly higher than this.
And that will not be the case, no, I could, no, that would not be.
I just wanted to follow up and make sure we were on the same page.
But this year, we're good.
Yeah, nothing this year, and, and we will help them get that seven hundred dollars or whatever the thing is for private parties next year from A and P. I know these guys. But, yeah, and I'm sorry all that happened, unfortunately. Anything else or any questions you might have that I might answer about the aquatic parks? Anything else to be discussed this evening from anyone?
I'm gonna adjourn.
Slag it? Slag it, we're adjourned.
All right. I was looking, I was gonna take this off, man. It's on the plaque, so you can take it off occasionally.
Oh, that's.